Board of Adjustment Meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice that this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News. Notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Notice made available to township clerk. Notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star-Ledger. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Here.
Mr. Tillery?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Roggio? Mr. Blount?
Here.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Here.
And Chairman Cahill?
Here.
Will everyone please stand for a salute to the board?
And to the Republic, which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I assume there were no changes to the agenda tonight, Mr. Caneley?
There are none.
Okay. Let's move on to item number five, twenty-four dash ZB dash thirty slash thirty-one V, Anor Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals. My name is Tim Arch. I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey, and I am here representing Anor Academy. Anor Academy is a religious academy that is currently operating out of the Middlesex County Muslim Center down the road on Hose Lane. This is an application involving Block six zero zero three, Lot one point zero two, which is three ninety-nine Hose Lane. The proposal tonight is we're seeking to utilize an existing vacant portion of the office building at three ninety-nine Hose Lane in order to move the Anor Academy, which is a kindergarten through fourth grade religious academy. His proposal is going to include also site improvements to the existing parking field to provide a safe and efficient pickup and drop-off area for the children. Because of time constraints related to the upcoming school year, some of the improvements are proposed to be phased between school year one and school year two. So we'll be discussing, when we get to sort of the parking layouts, we'll be discussing two separate parking layouts. One that applies to, that can be immediately implemented for year one, and another that involves a little bit more infrastructure that's going to be implemented for year two. In addition, the board should be aware, there is a sister application that is pending that hasn't been before the board yet. That is pertaining to a proposed adult daycare use that's also going to be proposed on the same site. Since it's not yet before the board, we're not going to be going into details on that use yet. However, our parking and traffic analysis does factor in and anticipate coordinating with that proposed future use. So you may hear some testimony about how the uses are well-suited for one another, how it relates to the parking needs and the circulation. But we anticipate speaking more about that later when that other application comes before you. But just so you know, we may be mentioning a future adult daycare proposed use there and how that coordinates with the Anor Academy that's here tonight. So the relief that we're seeking tonight is obviously a use variance. The religious school is not permitted within the BP one zone. There's also an existing side yard setback variance where twenty-five feet is required and twenty-four and change feet is proposed and existing. I imagine you'll hear about a sentence about that existing variance, and that's pretty much all we'll need to talk about that. And then the last is a parking variance where three hundred and thirty-one spaces are required per calculation of the ordinance. And we are proposing two hundred and sixty-four spaces under the year one layout and two hundred and twenty-eight spaces under the year two layout. That sounds like it's a big deficiency in spaces. But what you're going to hear is if you break down that amongst the uses, the school requires a hundred and sixty-five spaces per the ordinance calculation. You're going to hear that because it's pickup and drop-off and it's K through four, that the only people that are going to be utilizing those spaces from the school are going to be faculty, and you're only going to have about twenty-five individuals using it. So for a hundred and sixty-five spaces required per ordinance, there's really only going to be, at any given time beyond the pickup and drop-off, about twenty-five people using it related to the school. In addition to that, there's an existing office use that's there. It's actually the owner of the property has their office there, and that's a company called Onyx. And I believe some of the representatives are here tonight, if you have any questions for them. That office use is calculated to need a hundred and thirty-five spaces under the ordinance. And anecdotally, in speaking to them, they only have about sixteen to twenty employees that park at any given time there. So if you look at the discrepancy between what is needed under the ordinance and what is needed in real life, you'll see that there is a vast amount of parking that is available there that will actually, that is going unused currently. Just to talk about the reports quickly, we do have a CME traffic report that's revised through seven twenty-four. We have Mr. Chadwick's report, which was revised through seven twelve. We have the fire report, which did indicate approval. That was on seven three. And then we have what I'm going to call the tri-party staff report, because it's signed by three professional staff members, and that was dated on seven twenty-four twenty-four. So I do have four witnesses tonight. We'll try to be quick but thorough. We believe that through these witnesses, we're going to be able to hit upon and address all the comments in the report. However, at the close of all that testimony, what I would like to do is be able to double back and address specifically that tri-party report, because that's the report that really has most of the conditions requested by the township in it. And as you'll see in that report, it's anticipated that we're going to be entering into a developer's agreement to address certain aspects of the conditions in terms of timing and whatnot. And actually, the township and us have been in discussions about that already and have actually laid out some specific language. And so I think it'll be helpful for the board to hear what that proposed language from the developer's agreement is going to be, so that they can take that into consideration when they make their ultimate decision. So that's my plan. Unless there's any initial or preliminary questions or anything from me, I think I'm ready to proceed.
Could I interrupt you, Mr. Arch? There is a report from myself, July twenty-three, which was the latest submission that I received on the...
I emailed it yesterday.
Yeah, you know what, Mr. Chadwick? That's my mistake. I think I just didn't update my revision date for that. I do believe I got your revised report, so thank you for that. Anything else preliminarily?
I see you put on your first witness.
Okay. My first witness is Shemel Malik.
Is Shemel Malik present? Unmute yourself, sir.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Your name and address, please?
Shemel Malik, sixty Timber Hill Drive. Timber Hill is one word. That's in Franklin Park, New Jersey, zero eight eight two three.
Could you spell your first name, please?
S like Sam, H O M like Mark, A I L. Last name, Malik, M like Mark, A L I K.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, so, Mr. Malik, you are representative for Anor. If you can just tell us, what is your position for Anor? And tell us a little bit about the academy.
Sure, I'm on the Board of Directors. And specifically, I'm one of the officers on the board as a treasurer. And Anor Academy has been in existence for about twenty years. We currently operate out of one thousand Hose Lane in Piscataway, connected to the MCMC mosque. We have about four hundred and fifty or so students currently enrolled and in matriculation. And we have a dire need based on recent enrollments and registration to expand. And so we're looking to expand into three ninety-nine Hose Lane, which is the subject of today's matter, for our kindergarten through fourth grade operations.
Okay, so just to be clear, because you threw out a big number there, four hundred something, that includes the entirety of your matriculating students. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, we're talking specifically this site about your K through fourth grade, right?
Yes, that would be about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy students.
Okay, good. I just didn't want to have the board's heads explode. So in terms of employees that are going to be on the site, how many faculty and employees are going to be at that one location?
So we anticipate about twenty teachers and faculty and admin.
Okay.
The total is twenty.
Okay, and my understanding is that the idea for pickup and drop-off is that students are driven to the school and are dropped off and then are picked up at a later date. Can you tell us at a later time? Can you tell us what those anticipated times are or hours of operation for that are?
Sure, the drop-off will be between seven thirty to eight AM, and pickup will be between three fifteen to three forty-five PM.
Okay, so in a sort of roughly seven to four would be a rough estimate to what the operation of the school is at any given time.
Correct, yes.
And during the day, during the school day, do you anticipate having very many more than just those, you know, twenty faculty parking in the lot?
No.
Okay.
That's it.
One thing that was talked about in the reports was the topic of busing. Do you anticipate utilizing school buses for this site?
Likely the smaller bus vans, but not a full-size bus.
Okay, so sort of small van, something that's more akin to, you know, a small, you know, vehicle like a normal person.
Almost like an SUV or a minivan, yes.
Correct, okay. And if there was any larger busing that was proposed in the future, we would be able to provide a, you know, a circulation plan and all that to the township professionals for their assessment. Would that be correct?
That's correct.
Okay. One of the questions that came up in the reports was about deliveries. Can you talk about what sort of deliveries you get on the site and the frequency of those deliveries?
Generally stationary products, so it would be no different than like an Amazon delivery that you would see in your neighborhood development coming through. They'll come by and deliver stationary products, school products.
Okay, so you're not getting eighteen-wheelers or anything along those lines?
No, not at all, no.
Okay, and if the township staff requires it, would you be willing to arrange it so that any sort of deliveries or drop-offs would be done at the front of the building, which we'll actually see when we get to the engineering or the civil sets is separate and apart from where those drop-off areas is?
Yeah, that's no problem at all.
Okay. So going back to, you're now, you're currently utilizing MCMC. Do you happen to know roughly how many parking spaces are available in the total of MCMC?
Approximately a hundred and eighty.
Okay, so actually, this site provides overall a much larger parking field than what you're now currently using.
That's correct.
And you're only utilizing a very, very small portion of that overall parking in MCMC, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so based on your experience, based on how much you've been doing it, do you believe that the parking that is being provided at this site is more than adequate for both your needs and the additional tenants' needs at that site?
Well, yes, well, more than adequate.
Okay, and just to confirm, since this is K through four, you don't anticipate that any of your more gifted fourth-grade students will be driving and parking at the site during school days, correct? You're going to discourage them?
That's correct.
Okay, good. I have no further direct questions for Mr. Malik. I would turn them over to the board.
Anyone on the board have any questions or comments?
I have one question, is there any?
John.
In terms of lunch, how are you handling that?
So the students bring their own lunch, Mr. Chadwick?
So there's no catering?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Anyone else on the board?
The last question, is there any kind of medical staff as part of the administrative staff?
So as part of the, one of the requirements, and it's part of our floor plan as well, is to have a nurse on site, so yes.
Full-time? Full-time?
Full-time.
Okay, I didn't notice that, okay.
So John, okay. Anyone else on the board have any questions or comments?
I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I was curious if you were planning on doing any special events as a whole school, like a graduation or talent show, a situation where there'd be unusually high traffic coming to the site outside of that seven to four window?
We have not talked about that, but if we were to do that, we can certainly do that on our main campus at one thousand Hose Lane. We have the facilities there with our gym, which is used for, as a multipurpose type of a room. Most events, graduation events, it plays over there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I do have one other question.
Sure, go ahead.
In terms of recess exercise, is there any provision for that?
As of now, there is not. We have in the floor plan proposed a gym for light activities, dodgeball and that sort of thing. But outside of that, there is not.
There's nothing planned outside of the building currently, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But there is inside facilities of sorts. There will be a room that's sort of a recreation multipurpose.
Yes.
Or is it going to be a classroom most of the time?
It's going to be a classroom most of the time, but we have provided a gym type of a location for light activity.
Thank you, John.
And that's to keep in compliance with any sort of disruptions to other tenants and so on and so forth. So for that reason, I emphasize light activity.
Tim, I think you can call your next witness.
Okay, our next witness is Ms. Donna Bullock, who is our professional engineer.
Is Ms. Bullock present? Donna, you're muted. It's okay. There you go.
Thank you.
I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Donna Bullock, B U L L O C K, one thirty-seven Central Avenue, Island Heights.
Thank you.
I'm a professional engineer and project manager at Morgan Engineering. I have been giving professional testimony in front of planning boards, zoning boards, committees for twenty-four years in front of, for site plan subdivisions.
Ms. Bullock, you're fine, you're fine.
Oh, thank you.
Your credentials are great, let's proceed.
I just babble on.
That's okay.
Okay, so I'll just, you know, just briefly discuss some of the characteristics of the site. So we know that it's known as three ninety-nine Hose Lane, Block six zero zero three, Lot one point oh two in Piscataway, Middlesex County. It is located in the PB one zoning district, and the site contains four point eight acres. The fully developed existing site is located on the east side of Hose Lane, also known as New Jersey State Highway Route eighteen. There's an existing two-story masonry office building, sorry, three-story masonry office building, associated parking areas with concrete curb, concrete walks, pavers and trash enclosure. And there is a two-way access drive onto Hose Lane at a controlled intersection, which discharges onto a divided highway. For the proposed application, the proposal, as you just heard, was to repurpose the existing building into an elementary school, Anor's Academy. And to accommodate this use, the site's parking area and site circulation will need to be upgraded. Improvements include additional handicap spaces, reconfiguration of parking stalls, restriping existing stalls, and the addition of concrete walks and traffic control striping.
Donna, I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt you. Do you want me to, I can share my screen so I can bring up the overall plan. Were you intending to do that, or do you want me to do that?
I have not learned how yet.
Okay.
So if you want to put up sheet two of eleven, that would be great, but I just have a few more brief things before I'm going to get into the year one plan and the year two plan. Just another comment. The existing parking count is a hundred and eighty-seven. The proposed number of parking stalls is seventy-seven. Therefore, we have a total parking criteria of two hundred and sixty-four, where three hundred and thirty-one is required, as stated by Mr. Arch previously. Therefore, variance is required for the number of parking stalls. We are short by sixty-seven spaces. And this parking, the parking criteria for this and improvements doesn't include any expansion to the existing building, and there's no expansion to the existing paved parking area. It's more of a reutilization of the existing paved area, so there's no increase in impervious area. So the intention is to complete this in two phases. And we have a site improvement plan, year one, which is sheet two of eleven of the site plan set, which is dated six thirteen twenty-four, entitled Use Variance and Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan. So as you can see on this plan, if we, if we talk about all the things that we're improving, if you go up to the top portion, keep going, so right here, so you see that we have the addition of eight handicap parking stalls, handicap striping, a handicapped ramp that is going to give access onto the sidewalk. So we have that going on, and right to the top of that, we're adding a four-foot wide concrete walk adjacent to the area that's entitled reserved for drop-off parking area and signage. Right to the right of that, we have three existing standard parking stalls that we will be converting into three van-accessible stalls, oversized vehicle, as mentioned prior, not buses, but more of like a SUV-type vehicle. We are also, if we scroll down a little bit, we're going to be removing the concrete around the generator. We are going to be providing hairpin striping for the new seventy-seven parking spots that are currently not striped on site. We'll be providing traffic control striping, such as the flow arrows for control. And we also, not shown on the plan, but we will provide four EV parking spaces with this phase. We will patch and repair the entire parking area. We will implement supplemental plantings and landscaping as required. We will remove a rear fence located at the rear of the site that would be in the way of parking circulation and parking to those stalls. We will remove that fence and the debris, and we will keep the trash enclosure there. And we will also add additional lighting at the school's entrances to maintain the point-five-foot candles as required by the ordinance. So that's my summary of the phase year one improvements. The next sheet, which is sheet six of eleven, so basically right here is pretty much the improvements on this side. So we will be constructing a drop-off lane and a bypass lane adjacent and parallel to the existing building. We'll provide flush curb and ballards. We'll also construct a curb and unreed island. And this would require the removal of eighteen of the parent parking spaces. In addition to this, at this time, we will add four additional EV parking spaces. We will mill and resurface the entire parking area. We will restripe the area that's milled and resurfaced. We will add trees and landscaping within new curbed islands with coordination with the landscape architect. We will complete all the landscaping on the site, and we will add a PVC fiber optic conduit. So in, basically, that's the phase one and phase two that, you know, to deal with the school year as stated before, so there won't be an eruption, so that the phases, the construction can be done in a nice, calm manner, so it won't just disrupt the school year, and everything will get done and just come out with a really nice site.
Thank you, Donna. One thing I just want to point out, as you were saying, that this new drop-off lane, bypass lane, that is going to result in a reduction of the parking spaces. I just want to make sure that the board is clear that this is specifically designed and requested by the township professionals for that phase two. And so I just want to make sure that they're aware of that, that this was a design that they had wanted us to put in, which results in a slightly, a slight reduction of that parking count.
Yes.
I believe that is all the direct testimony that I have from Ms. Bullock. And I will stop sharing or continue sharing if you want me to.
Any other board members have any questions or comments? Jonathan?
I have one quick question.
Sure, sir, say it.
The landscaping plan showed additional landscaping around the generator. I assume that still stays.
Yes, this...
The island was created with the year-two circulation plan. Is that intended to be landscaped?
Yes, it is.
One thing I do want to clarify about the landscaping plan, Mr. Chadwick, and when I sort of go back around at the end of all the testimony, is that we will be agreeing to landscaping at the discretion of the staff and in terms of the timing and, you know, adding in additional landscaping islands. And so all that will be discussed at the end, so hopefully I'll be able to come back around to that and explain. But it's going to be up to the staff to, there may be modifications to the landscaping plan based on the township staff's recommendations.
There was a lot of information provided in the testimony. Is that part of the developer's agreement in terms of repaving? Patching first, repaving second, restriping, some of it first, all of it second? Is that part of the developer's agreement?
Correct, it is. And as I said, at the end of testimony, I'm going to go and highlight all of the specifics that have already been discussed about that developer's agreement with the township. So you may get additional clarity at that point.
Fine.
And I also did try, as I was speaking through the phases, address items in the letter so that as we go back through those items at the end, they would have been addressed in my testimony. I'll be glad to talk about them again at the end.
Thank you. Jonathan, you have your hands raised?
I have my hands raised, yes, Mr. Chairman. On this sheet, could you pan up to the top of this particular sheet, please? So, that's good enough. So on the year one plan, there was a note that said, remove the striping for the parking spaces here. And then now, in year two, it looks like it's just like elongated parking spaces. Are you intending to, like, fully restripe that parking area as regular parking spaces? Or what are you planning to do exactly in that area?
The intention was to remove the six standard parking stalls that were shown and stripe it as shown on this plan now, so that the buses or the small vehicles can park there that are larger than a regular spot. It's, they're intended to be left just as shown.
And one of the things that I will add to that is that we will be agreeing to restripe as necessary, restripe and re-signage as necessary in the discretion of the township staff as they review this. So again, we're open to any, you know, restriping or reconfiguration of striping that the township staff requires us to do.
Is there any busing to the existing school? Is there any busing to the existing school?
There is, uh, is there any existing busing?
Yes.
Uh, I would, I would have to ask, uh, Mr. Malik again if you're connecting to the MCMC school?
Yes. Is there any busing?
Yes, there is one full bus that comes with students that are based in Piscataway.
None of the small ones?
Uh, not to my recollection. Every time I've dropped off my kids, I don't recall seeing any of the smaller ones.
Mr. Malik, while you're available, um, when does the school year end?
Um, we coincide our school year calendar with the public school. Uh, so holidays and all of that. So, yeah.
So there'll be no, no summer classes, then?
Uh, no, not, not on this new proposed campus, no.
Got it. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments?
I had one.
Yeah, Jonathan.
My question was concerning site lighting. One of my comments was, uh, excuse me, insufficient lighting at the entrance for the year one. I was wondering if you could speak to that condition?
We, uh, uh, um, I believe that was testified to, but we will agree. One thing I will point out is all the operate, all the hours of operation are during the daylight. So it may not be necessary, but we will upgrade to, to the appropriate foot candles as indicated on the report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. I don't think anybody else. You can go on with your next expert.
Uh, the next person to testify will be Mr. John Ray. He's our traffic expert.
Mr. Ray, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Your name and address, please.
John Ray, R-E-A, a professional engineer with McDonough and Ray Associates, fourteen thirty-one Lakewood Road, Manasquan, New Jersey.
And I believe Mr. Ray has appeared before this board before as a traffic engineer.
I agree.
Mr., Mr., uh, Arch, please proceed.
Uh, Mr. Ray, please proceed.
Okay, so what my firm was engaged to do was to prepare a traffic and a parking analysis for the proposed academy. And I will say upfront, there is also a, I, I don't want to call it a companion application, but there will be an application coming before the board for an adult daycare center, uh, which will occupy the first level of the building with the K through four Annor Academy occupying the second floor of the building. So I just wanted to put that out there because when I did my traffic study, I assumed the worst-case scenario, full build-out for year two for the Annor Elementary School and for the Adult Daycare Center, which will share the building, share access, sure, kind of share the parking lot, but have their own dedicated parking in an area that will not conflict with the, with the academy's parking. So we did do a full traffic impact study for full build-out for year two, which will include two hundred and sixty students and for one hundred and two patrons at the Adult Daycare Center. So what we did was, we've been out to the site on numerous occasions to review existing traffic and parking conditions. As you know, there is a large parking lot which serves the office building, which no longer has any tenants, and that, that's why we're repurposing the building. We conducted traffic counts at the intersection of Route eighteen, and I believe the name of the street that we're using to access Hose Lane is Lloyd Drive. Used to be an office building, and on the opposite side of Hose Lane, it's Erickson Drive. It's a four-way intersection, signalized with a pretty new traffic signal with all the typical amenities you would find with a current or modern traffic signal. So we conducted those traffic counts in early May of twenty twenty-four. Uh, schools were in session, Rutgers University was in session. We wanted to make sure we got the traffic counts when, you know, Rutgers was generating traffic. So that's when we conducted our traffic counts. We generated traffic for the daycare, for the Annor Academy, two hundred and sixty students, and for the Adult Daycare, utilizing Institute of Transportation Engineers data. Uh, we projected traffic volumes at the signalized intersection, and again, all of our traffic was assumed to come through the signalized intersection. Uh, that's the way access is going to be provided to the property. That's the way access has been provided to the property. And so we assumed, again, a worst-case scenario, all of that traffic comes through, through that signalized intersection. We projected traffic to a design year of two, uh, two thousand twenty-six. That is when year two of the academy will be up and running, and we'll have the two hundred and sixty students, the, the maximum number of students that are projected, and when the adult daycare will be up and operating as well. We calculated the level of service for the build and no-build condition at the signalized intersection at Hose Lane with the finding that for both the morning and afternoon peak hours for the twenty twenty-six design year, we will have level of service C or better conditions at the signalized intersection, meaning that the intersection will operate well within accepted traffic engineering parameters. Uh, the second part of the study, if you will, that we did was, was to work with the town's professionals and with Mr. Chen, the town's traffic engineer, to provide a two-phase plan for the parking lot. And as Donna Bullock has indicated upfront in her testimony, for year one, we will be utilizing a, a, a procedure where the parents will have to park in a designated parking space for parents. And there were twenty-eight of them for year one, and walk the child into the school, sign them in with the same procedure happening in the afternoon where the parent would have to pull into a parking space, go into the building, sign the child out. This is a procedure that is very typically used by daycare centers, childcare centers, such as the Goddard School, uh, Kinder Care, all of the different national daycare centers, all operate under the same procedure. So this is not something that is new and is something that the applicant is well aware of, that has to be done for the year-one operation. And I must add, for year one, it is my understanding, and somebody from the academy can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we will be limiting the number of students for year one to be one hundred and fifty students. And I can tell the board that that is a very typical number as far as a childcare or daycare center. They typically have capacities of a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty students. So what I'm saying is, for year one, we believe as far as the parking and the drop-off and pickup procedures, the academy will operate very similarly to a daycare center or childcare center for, for year one. The year-two plan has been developed after consulting with township professionals. Uh, there was a desire for a, a drop-off lane to be constructed, and that's what Donna Bullock testified to, as, as far as the year-two plan. So in year two, the drop-off lane will be constructed, and the, in, the, the population increase at the school will go up to two, a maximum of two hundred and sixty students. And for year two, the drop-off lane will be utilized for drop-off and pickup with assistance from the academy staff, helping the parents get the children into and out of the car. It's going to be a K-through-four operation. So that will be the, the second part of the operation. With respect to the amount of parking that's there, I know, Mr. Chen, your traffic engineer, has summarized the, the, the need for the parking variance in his report. I've gone through the, um, the, the plans and, and taken a look at the parking spaces that are going to be dedicated for the Annor Academy and for the Adult Daycare. And I've counted the balance of the parking that will be available, and it's a hundred and forty-five additional parking spaces over and above what's dedicated for, for the elementary school and the Adult Daycare Center. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chen, in his report, has indicated that the, the empty office space that will still be in the building that could be occupied by an office tenant would require a hundred and thirty-five spaces under the Piscataway zoning requirements. So we have a hundred and forty-five spaces left. One thirty-five will be required for the balance of the space in the building. So I believe the, uh, the variance for the parking can be granted without having any kind of a negative impact on the parking situation. And, um, I guess that about summarizes it. We will continue to work with the town's professionals and with Mr. Chen to make any, you know, minor adjustments to, to striping, signage, things that may be necessary. But I believe we've gotten to a point right now where the plans are pretty much in conformance with the requirements that have been set forth by the town's professionals and by your traffic engineer. And that basically summarizes it.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Any other members of the board? I was going to ask, are you ready to questions first? Any other members of the board have any questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Done?
I have one question. Uh, John, you mentioned that the staff would come out to, on the, uh, the year-two plan where you have the, um, parallel drop-off area.
Yes.
Staff going to come to the car to get the kids, or is it going to be a different procedure than getting the parents getting out of the car and going into the building?
Uh, I, I can let, uh, Mr. Malik, you know, um-
The reason I ask that question is-
Yeah.
It would seem to me if the staff took the children from the car to the building, that the lane provided for drop-offs would be fully adequate.
I agree, and I believe that is the procedure that will be in place. Mr. Malik can, hopefully, can confirm that. We will also maintain the, the parent parking spaces in the event a parent has to, uh, bring a child into the building, talk with one of the teachers or one of the staff.
Right.
It'll be the possibility to use the parking spaces as well, too. But for the everyday operation of the drop-off and pickup, the, the, the drop-off lane will be used.
Because if you get to two hundred and sixty students, all coming in, in a half-hour period, that lane needs to turn over quite quickly.
It does. You're correct, Mr. Chadwick. It needs to keep moving. That's why the staff will have to assist. Correct.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, please.
Um, Mr. Ray, uh, I have one question with regard, and I, I thank you for your testimony. You've answered a lot of my questions with regards to the traffic issues. Um, with regard to Route Eight, we know that Route Eighteen is a state highway. And is there any, um, is there any procedural issues do you see going forward with the possible need for, um, an access permit or anything, any similar documentation from the state?
Well, yeah, Route Eighteen is under the jurisdiction of NJ DOT. And what we have done, Mr. Chen, is we have applied for a letter of no interest. As you know, the DOT has a procedure. If you are not making any physical changes to the access to the state highway, and you're just changing a use, expanding or changing a use, as long as the new application does not generate one hundred additional peak hour traffic movements, uh, you typically qualify for a letter of no interest. We have applied for the letter of no interest. We hope to get that information shortly. But if the DOT, for one reason or another, disagrees and wants us to get a new permit, we will have to get the new permit. But I do believe we, uh, we qualify for a letter of no interest.
And my, uh, other question is, um, it, it, I, I, I assume that you had a chance to, you received my letter from yesterday, uh, dated July twenty-four.
Yes.
Is there, is there anything specific within that letter that you or your, uh, professional team, uh, feel that would be, you wouldn't be able to comply with?
No, I don't think, I, I think we can comply with whatever, uh, you know, details you will require. We, we will work with you and your staff. Um, I did want to discuss the DOT. You know, you, you asked the question, and I, I believe we qualify for the letter of no interest. We can justify the parking variance based on what I've testified to. So all of the other items, you know, which basically pertain to a lot of signing and striping for the traffic flow, we will work with your office. We've, we've provided crosswalks from the handicap spaces to the sidewalk, uh, in front of the building. Any other small items that we need to do, we, we can comply.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. At this time, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Chen, how would you like to proceed?
Uh, we have one final witness, um, and that would be our planner, uh, who is, oop, who is right there.
Kendra Liele. Good evening.
Good evening. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Kendra Liele, L-E-L-I-E. My business address is two East Broad Street, Hopewell, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, would you like me to go through my qualifications?
Briefly.
Um, I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey for the past thirty years. My license is in good standing. Um, I have a bachelor's degree in environmental planning and design and a master's degree in, in, uh, city regional, um, planning from Rutgers, both from Rutgers University.
That's fine, Kendra. You have me as well.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Sure, um, I, I, I'm not going to, uh, I'm not going to repeat everybody's, uh, testimony with regards to the subject property. I do just want to mention that the surrounding uses include, uh, the high school, which is north and east of the site. Office, uh, is south and west of the site. Future town center, it includes mixed-use, uh, multifamily residential is immediately across the street, uh, Route Eighteen, which is a divided state highway. Um, the project, it does require D-one use variance. Uh, schools are not permitted in the B-one district. Uh, it does permit government buildings, uh, and professional offices, banks, research activities for business and industrial activities as well. Um, so schools are not specifically permitted, therefore, a D-one variance, use variance is required. We are seeking a parking variance, as was indicated, and a very small existing side yard setback variance, which is really de minimis. It's an existing situation, could be considered a hardship. Um, and it's really on the, it's on the building that's located, uh, basically adjacent to the, to the next-door neighbor building, which creates a, a full complex. So I'm going to move into the use variance testimony. As you all know, for use variance testimony, you need to prove the positive criteria and the negative criteria. Uh, Mr. Chadwick, in his July second memorandum, which is the first one he provided, schools, uh, and, and indicated that schools are considered inherently beneficial. I agree with that, obviously. Um, and, uh, that's under the MLUL definition, which was added to the legislature in, uh, in, uh, two thousand nine. So inherently beneficial use, just as a reminder, is a use that is considered, uh, to be of value to the community because it, it really serves a public good and it promotes general welfare. And examples could, could include, obviously, a school, a hospital, childcare center, a group home, um, and other such facilities. Um, and under this particular case law, that, um, the positive criteria is really, uh, assumed to be satisfied with inherently beneficial. Then that was in the Smart SMR versus Fair Law, uh, Board of Adjustment case. And then also, most, you know, most of the time, we as planners cite the, the, this, this SICA, um, uh, case, which really indicates that we aren't really supposed to deal with site suitability as it relates to inherently beneficial. It's kind of assumed that that is, is met. Um, so I really want to kind of talk to what, uh, the, the, the SICA case lays out for us for, uh, proving, um, the, and, and, and for you to agree that, uh, this is, use variance can be, uh, uh, approved. So in the, the SICA, there's, uh, there's a, a different, uh, I guess, weighing, um, um, argument that is, is made. First, we identify the public interest at stake, uh, realizing that some uses are more compelling than others. Uh, second, we look at any detrimental effects that could come from the granting of the variance. Third, we look at any reasonable conditions that could reduce any of the detrimental effects. And then finally, it's a weighing process. You weigh the positive, uh, or what we would call the public interest against the negative impacts or effects, and determine if the positives truly outweighs the negatives. Um, so briefly, the public interest at stake, I'm going to go through each of these points. Um, as we know, this is a, uh, K, K-through-four education to a community with a focus of religious education. Um, it allows for the lower elementary s- uh, school students to begin and build their, uh, their American Muslim identity through the teaching of Islamic religion. Uh, the school is accredited, uh, in New Jersey, as well as follows the curriculum based on New Jersey standards and provides Islamic educational instruction. Uh, and, and the mission really is, uh, that it, it does that and balances the religious, academic, and cultural knowledge, and imparts the importance of civic involvement and charitable work. Um, I think we all understand that the importance of education and life and, and grant of this relief, um, meaning that the, you know, the public interest at stake certainly will broaden the access to educational resources within this community, but also the surrounding re- region in a meaningful way. Potential negative impacts, I, I'm going to submit to you that there are no detrimental effects with the, this particular application. Um, as John Ray just testified to traffic, there is no significant impact on traffic, and the school will operate within accepted traffic engineering parameters. Um, parking, uh, pa- parking is actually more than sufficient. Uh, while we're asking for a variance, the actual empirical data or the use of the- empirical data or the use of the property shows that there are sufficient number of parking spaces to not only handle the school, the existing office complex, but the proposed future potential adult daycare. So in fact, we have more than enough parking spaces to not only address a full build-out of an office space of the square footage, even though it's being used to, you know, with something less than what the ordinance would require. But as Mr. Ray had just testified, he feels very confident that the parking spaces are more than sufficient. There will be no, and when we talk about negative impacts, we look at nuisance impacts like noise and smell or light. This will not operate out of the ordinary noise, smell, light that would be coming from an office building. Actually, we're dealing with little people, and these little people actually generate less of an impact than full-grown adults. So, you know, I just mentioned that that is something that we don't, we don't anticipate creating any additional nuisance. Aesthetics, we are improving the property, not only from a parking lot standpoint, but also not, you know, not having to increase the parking lot size. We're able to save mature trees and green area and also really improve it by adding some additional landscaping and remove unsightly existing storage outside. The site will operate, as we said, during normal business hours, so we're not dealing with any light intrusion or things that would occur out of the ordinary business hours. So overall, you know, this location in the site, there really are no significant impacts. And while that's the case, we still have to go through the weighing process. I'm not gonna get into the conditions unless you would like me to. But the third prong of the SICA test is what conditions can be placed to mitigate any negative impacts? And while I've submitted to you, there's no detrimental effects. The applicant is agreeing to a whole host of of conditions, all the way from providing charging, EV charging stations above and beyond the required milling and repaving the entire parking lot, restriping, providing for the landscaping. And there are other items that I believe Mr. Arch will go through as well that we would throw into a developer's agreement. So on balance, it's my professional opinion that the public interest in this case is a school overwhelmingly outweighs any potential negative impacts. The board also needs to address, again, the weight of the negative impacts if conditions can be imposed. And I would submit to you that all of the conditions that are being imposed actually not only mitigate any any potential negative impact, but it truly improve the operation of the property as well as improve the aesthetics of the property. So as it goes to positive aspects, if far outweigh the negatives, there will be no substantial detriment to the public good or your master plan. I would just submit to you also that your master plan has several goals and objectives that this particular application is is ensuring and upholding, providing continued expansion of an economic and tax base. As we all know, the office market has dropped significantly over the last four years. So empty office space in order to fill that and reuse it is definitely a benefit to the municipality. We're providing an essential service, and that's one of your goals of your master plan, as well as providing a, in my opinion, and I hope you would find the same, it's a compatible land use to the surrounding land uses of which one is a high school. This is a low-intensity use. We don't, as was indicated, we don't expect negatively impacting any traffic congestion. So to conclude on the use variance piece of it, I believe there is, and I would ask for you to believe that there is, too, a compelling public interest at stake. The use of an existing building as an elementary school for an educational focus on Islamic principles. There are no detrimental impacts that would come from the grant of the variance. There are several conditions that will improve the site. And when you weigh the public interest against the negative effects, it's my professional opinion that the positive certainly outweighs the negative, and there would not be substantial detriment.
Thank you, man.
You're welcome. Do you want me to go through any testimony on the parking variance at this point? Or would you like it to just be subsumed within the use variance?
I think that we're in a good place right now, to be honest with you. I think if Mr. Arch would just go rounded up to the Holy Trinity of the three engineers that sent over the site impact, we could wrap this thing up.
Yes, absolutely. If there's no questions from the board for Kendra, I'm ready to.
Jonathan or John, you're the one? Now, we're good to go. Let's wrap it up. Thank you, Kendra.
Thank you. So I do just briefly want to address the comments in the tri-party report. Number one, satisfy affordable housing. We absolutely will comply with that. Grading plan needs to be approved by the engineer. Absolutely, we agree. Application needs to be reviewed by Township Fire Commissioner. It has been and has been approved. We agree with that. Revised plans, we will correct any revisions on the title block. We will agree. Five is calling for testimony. We believe we provided that. Six is also calling for testimony that I believe we have provided. Seven also calling for testimony about buses that I think we provided. Eight, I believe we provided testimony to that adequately. Nine, it's indicating these parent-only parking spaces, and they're asking for potential more signage and stripage. We will certainly do that per the township professionals. Same with ten, it's indicating just clarification to remove it if it's reserved for the adult daycare from this application submission. We will certainly do that. Copy of a cross-access easement, I believe we may have already provided that, but if we haven't, we will. And if it needs to be amended, we can do that as well. We, twelve is no longer applicable because we've indicated that we're removing that fence, so we don't have to talk about sufficiency of the of the fifteen point six feet. Thirteen, we do agree that any additional striping, we will agree with. I'm gonna skip fourteen for a moment. I'm gonna skip fifteen for a moment. I'm gonna skip sixteen and seventeen. Eighteen is about lighting. I believe we addressed that. Nineteen, we will certainly agree to that. If there's any signage that we are proposing, that it will be compliant, or else we would have to come back before the board to request any sort of variance. We will provide a detail for pedestrian crossing signage. We will remove the barbed wire on the generator enclosure. We do agree that all debris located in the rear of the property will be removed. We will agree that the, as we said, the enclosure will be removed, and the debris will be removed, but the trash enclosure will stay. And I believe we addressed, we will agree with the PVC piping and the fiber optics and the developer's agreement. So specifically to the ones that I skipped, there is specific language that we had discussed about including into the developer's agreement. So I do want to just indicate that the CME report does indicate the requirement of twelve make-ready EV spaces. A review of the applicable statute with, I believe, the township attorney reveals that the calculation for the required spaces should really only be applied to newly added parking spaces, and that was part of the clarification, the revision of the state EV statute that came out recently. Nevertheless, we are agreeing to install a total of eight active charges, not just chargers, not just make-ready chargers, four of which will be installed and operational by or before November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The remaining to be installed and operational by the start of the second school year in two thousand twenty-five. The only other thing that I want to mention with that, which was also discussed and will be in the developer's agreement, is if there are any delays caused by third parties, such as PSENG, that for some reason prevent us, even though we are diligently pursuing that, I assume that the township will agree if we can show them that we're reasonably pursuing that and some, and an entity like PSENG is causing a delay, that they will, you know, work with us to, with that time period, and I'm sure that they will. One of the requests was to mill and pave the entire parking field. If the township staff, in their discretion, believes that the entire parking field is in such disrepair that it needs to be milled and repaved, we will agree to do that prior to the second school year. Our only request is that the staff, prior to that milling and paving, that the professional staff come out and evaluate the existing pavement area, because there is a, there is a very large difference between the condition of the pavement in the front portion of the parking versus the condition of the pavement in the rear portion of the parking. So ultimately, if the staff, in their discretion, believes that it all needs to be paved, we will agree to do that. We would just like the opportunity for them to come out prior to milling and paving, just so that if there is a chance to recoup some costs or save some costs, we can do that. And I believe that that is, that that's been agreed to and will be a part of the developer's agreement.
Yes, it has.
We agree to work with township staff to prepare an acceptable landscape plan and planting schedule to meet the township standards and the discretion of the staff. The landscape plan shall incorporate planting islands at the discretion of township staff, coordinated so as to try not to negatively impact parking. Now, we anticipate that if we are adding some planting islands, that it may result in a net reduction of parking from what we're showing now. And we just want to make sure that there's an understanding that if the township staff wants us to do that and in their assessment, there is not a significant reduction of parking, that we would not have to come back before the board for a minor discrepancy between the number that we are presenting here today and what the township staff ultimately decides on. It's common that field changes such as this can potentially take take place during post-approval compliance. And so as long as it's not deemed significant, we would like to not have to come back here for something like that. We do agree that the staff-approved landscaping plan will substantially implemented no later than October fifteenth. However, with coordinating with the township staff, we would like to agree on certain elements of the full plan being phased in such a way so that full completion is done on or before the start of the second school year. And again, we'll work with your landscape architect and the professional staff to accomplish that. We do agree that no outdoor storage or equipment or materials will be allowed. All debris and enclosure fencing in the rear parking area will be removed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, with the exception of the trash receptacle. We do agree that the PVC fiber optic conduits will be installed by or before spring of two thousand twenty-five. And we do agree to bond for all deferred work at a hundred and twenty-five percent with cost estimates for year one and year two, which will be submitted to the engineering department. I believe, with that said, it addresses every possible comment.
We'll find out in about ten seconds. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments?
I think the clarification on the kids in the second year getting from the car to the school building is important.
Yes, Mr. Malik's the one?
He is. Mr. Malik, if you can just confirm, what we had indicated is in the second year, we were gonna have staff outside and present during the drop-off to actually escort the children from the car. Is that correct?
Yes, multiple staff.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know. It has to be a condition, or just a statement of fact within the resolution, Jim. I leave that up to you.
I'll include it.
I think it depends on how many pages he wants it to be.
I, anyone else? I'm assuming you're settled, Mr. Arch, correct?
Yes, that would be it, unless you want me to.
No, 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 please. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments?
Just one for me, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. Chairman.
I thank, Mr. Arch, I thank you for clarifying the electric vehicle requirement. When I was completing the language, I forgot that it was supposed to be the proposed parking spaces only. So I am in, I'm in concurrence with the eight parking spaces that you stated as required.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chen. Other members of the board have any questions? Good. I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application?
No, and Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion, and I will make a motion to approve this application with the language discussed. Can I get a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Captain. Call the room, please.
Mr. Weissman? No, we lost him. He had to go. Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
There he is. Mr. Patel.
Yes, Patel is here.
Mr. Regio? Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Arch, I'll be in touch with you regarding the resolution, which is gonna have to be quite detailed.
Absolutely. Understood. Thank you so much, everybody. Just for the record, I'm loving the seven o'clock thing, and you should really consider that.
Yes.
We need Sean to discuss that tonight, yes.
We did. We did. It's coming around the mountain. I don't care what Clark says. We, all favorite of the Germans, say hi.
Hi.
Have a great night, guys.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks for coming on, especially you people that are on vacation that popped in.
Yes, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enjoy, guys.